Welcome to the Hamilton County Commission Staff Meeting, June 25, 2024. Let's everybody introduce themselves on the dials.
Chrissy Rochell, Assistant Commissioner.
Stephanie Sumroldunas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
And I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. Okay, we'll get right to the agenda. We have the TLRC 2024 Levy Review Recommendations.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am here, Lisa Webb, from County Administration. I'm joined by a few members of the Tax Library Review Committee, as well as some of the agencies for the review today. But I'll go ahead and get started and introduce along the way. Go ahead and there's my clicker. Perfect. I'm going to give a little bit of background about the TLRC review process, and then I'll invite the chairs of both the Developmental Disabilities and the Family Services and Treatment levies up. Just a second, I apologize. And then discuss the next steps in the process for the levies going forward. Just as background, the TLRC has been in the levy process for the past six months, reviewing votes of developmental disabilities services and family services and treatment levies for the November 2024 ballot. That process began in January with the selection of consultants for each of those levy reviews. The month of February were presentations by each of the agencies for both of those levies. March and April majority was spent with agency meetings and tours, both by the subcommittees for the Tax Library Review Committee, as well as the two consulting groups. May, at the end of May, brought the consultant reports and presentations to the Tax Library Review Committee. Those were also posted on the Tax Levy Committee website, as well for the public. June brought rounds of public hearings. There were two public hearings, one for each of the levies from the Tax Library Review Committee out at the Board of Elections. And then, as early, as, as, up to date as just last evening, the TLRC voted to finalize recommendations on the Family Services and Treatment Levy Report, which brought us to today and this meeting here. I am going to bring up Eric here, to go ahead and talk about the Developmental Disabilities levy, and then we will move on from there.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Eric Landon, I chaired the Subcommittee for the Developmental Disability Services levy. As you may be aware, the services provided by DDS are mandated, and it's a levy where the local funding services provides a significant portion of both of the local match in order to access a significantly larger amount of federal funds. This is one of the largest levies in Hamilton County, it's $77 million. And DDS has a sizable fund balance, due to decreased services for COVID and an increase in federal funding during the period. The need for services and costs are increasing and will drive down this fund balance over the next five-year period. This reliance on the fund balance is not unique to Hamilton County. Eighty-one of eighty-eight counties in Ohio reporting declining fund balances in the coming years. Due to changes in state law, DDS was required to eliminate a waiting list during the last levy cycle, and has done that as part during the last five years. Now, one of the things that we, that raised significant concerns for us, is the decrease in the fund balance over the next five years. At the end of 2024, DDS is projected to have $127 million, and that fund balance is projected to decrease to $12 million by the end of 2029. So the TLRC is recommending a renewable levy at 4.13 mils, along with close monitoring and annual reporting of the new waivers and the financial projections. That's it, and we're happy to answer any questions about the levy.
Awesome, thank you. First of all, thank you everyone who serves on the TLRC Committee and volunteer your time, really appreciate it. I'm going to open it up to Vice President Treehouse for questions or comments.
Thank you. I too want to thank the members of the TLRC, especially the folks that have been serving on the subcommittees related to these two levies that are in front of us today. And Lisa, thank you to all your hard work. It's so much time and energy, but we really are grateful for the work that's being done, and have a lot of respect for the members of the organization. So, I was going to ask about the balance. So could you help us better understand what's going on more broadly, by way of the state, and this idea that we can't have folks without these waivers? I mean, I think it might be helpful to add some context to this, because the numbers of the amount that we're spending as we go is rather striking, as we reduce the amount in that balance. And I think it might be helpful for us to have more of an overview of the reason for that kind of decrease.
Absolutely, and Eric, and also Ed, if you want to jump up at any point, feel free. And we also have representatives from DDS here as well to answer questions. It's kind of, it's the same, it's a very similar situation to what we confront with mental health, with senior services, with all of our social services and programming in the county, which is higher demand and higher costs to be able to meet that demand in terms of the level of service and the hourly rates for providers, to be able to have enough providers to do the services that we need in Hamilton County. The provider rates alone have gone up from $13 an hour. They are $18 an hour currently, and next week, July 1st, they go up to $19 an hour, which is a nice increase for providers, and providers do need that increase to be able to provide care and have enough staff to meet the need. But all of that comes at a cost overarching for the levy as well. So as the provider costs have gone up, we've also seen the number of waivers gone up. So waivers become more expensive, and we're, they're also continuing to enroll more and more individuals that need services from the developmental, for developmental disabilities in the community. The unique piece compared to those other levies, is the developmental disabilities is a mandated service. Hamilton County is required to provide those services, and once an individual gets a waiver, we are providing those services for the rest of the individual's life, as long as they're in Hamilton County. So it's a long-term impact for every individual on those waivers. We cannot, especially since 2020 at the state level, we can't go to a waiting list, or we can't just disenroll individuals if there isn't funding and financing for those programs.
Yeah, so I think that's, that last point, I think is really important. And, and of course, you know, from my perspective, I support trying to provide as many services to as many people as possible, especially in the DD population. I think it's, you know, it's incumbent upon us to take care of people and to be supportive. And so I want to say that from the outset, and I do think that the providers that are going into the homes and tending to the needs of this particular population deserve to be paid a decent wage. And so, I want to say that from the outset as well. But it's this piece where we can't have a waiting list, we have to respond, that is driving some of these costs, and the decrease in the residual as we go. And so I just wanted to point that out, because as I said, that the numbers from that graph, Eric, that you presented are striking, and those dollar amounts are striking as we go from year to year. So I just wanted to put a finer point on it. Thank you.
The Tax Library Review Committee, uniquely in this levy, we have not done that in my history of working on the levies, part of the recommendation is to do an annual review with DDS, who is completely on board for that as well, but basically take that midterm review that we typically do, year two or year three of the levy, but do that every year for this levy in particular, so we can watch what's going on with caseloads and costs. And as things happen, if, if what's being predicted truly happens, and those numbers continue to rise at the rate they are now, we will make sure that the Commissioners are well aware of that along the way. And DDS is committed also to doing everything they can to looking at their levy and trying to maximize their services in the best ways that they can as well. I would also add that those provider rates are not controlled locally within Hamilton County, those are set at the state.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
I don't know if you said it, maybe you didn't, I just missed it. But, so is there a recommendation then, in front of us, for how you would like us to proceed, by way of a flat levy? Did you say that?
A recommendation is that it's a flat levy.
I don't know how I missed that.
There, there, there are two contradictory issues going on right now. They have a very significant fund balance. DDS has a very significant fund balance comprising approximately two years of funds they need to operate, but at the same time, they're going to be drawing down on that fund balance significantly, and that's because of decreased federal funding and an increase in services. So another thing to add to what Lisa was saying that we recommend, is quarterly monitoring of the number of waivers that they have. So we recognize that those are two different things, because we see a very precipitous decline in the fund balance over the next five years, but at the same time, the fund balance right now is quite significant, and all things being equal, would likely be And all things being equal, would likely be more than we'd recommend. And, you know, if we weren't facing this precipitous decline in the fund balance, then we might be recommending a different millage, possibly at a lower rate, but we do not, we recommend a flat millage going forward.
Okay. That's very helpful, especially at a time when we're hearing a lot about the strain of people paying their property taxes. It's especially important to note that the recommendation is flats.
Yes, these are not, the property taxes will not go up as to the DDS levy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you for the presentation. And so the spin-down is predictable, as you were saying, higher costs, higher demand. This is, and I like what you were saying about a one-year review every year. This is a five-year levy, and to say that it's flat, I'm going to say that even louder again when we come forward, and this is flat for the next five years is awesome. I can see the great financial planning through this, this developmental services, how you put in from '25 to '29. It's obvious that you guys did a lot of work, and you determined that it needed to be flat. So the projections are good, and as you were saying, as people, more people find out about you, and as people get older and all that, the demand will be great. So just good to hear and to see all the work that you've done on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. I concur with everything that was said earlier. At this juncture, it would be hard-pressed for me to support anything with a raise on the taxpayers. And so the fact that TLRC also sensitive to that, as you were looking at the funding, but also making sure that we continuously help people with disabilities. And that is critical at a time. We had a great event for the first time, Disability Day, and we had the 513 Relief Bus and partnering with DDS. There were a lot of people that came who had children, didn't know that this, that there were services available to them, so it was a great way to partner and get the word out. Before we close out, I would like to have DDS say a, say a word if possible.
One thing to mention too, as they're coming up, and we are very thankful that we do have the fund balance because we received extra reimbursements from the federal government over COVID, which greatly helped the levy fund. Part of this balancing in that annual review is because we know if we don't look ahead, while we're, while the levy is fine now, in five years, it may not be, and it would not be sustainable to maintain a flat levy balance at that time. So we want to make sure that the Levy Committee is staying on top of those numbers, as well as DD, that does a great job on their own financials as stewards of the taxpayers' money. But to make sure that we're checking in as much as possible on that as well.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Ryan Braun. I'm the Director of Community Relations. Lea Snider, our Superintendent, couldn't be here. She had planned vacation to visit her daughter, and so she sends her thank you to everybody on this committee, the TLRC. The committee was wonderful with their time. I think they really spent a lot of time making sure they understand the inner workings of our finances, and I really appreciated the time that they spent on it. I think the report really shows the work that they put into understanding everything. So we're thankful for that, and we're happy with the recommendations in this report. I would say we like the idea of talking to the TLRC every year because these projections that we're talking about, there's a lot of uncertainty. Those waiver waiting list changes that happened at the state that are really driving those numbers, when you look at that increase of waiver enrollment that's happened over the last couple of years, a lot of that is directly related to the state law changes. And so having the fund balance that gives us the opportunity to take the time and see how these trends are going to play out in the future is going to be really helpful. And then to have constant open communication with the TLRC about that process is going to help us responsibly spin this balance down to a reasonable level without putting things in jeopardy in the long term.
Awesome. Good question.
Yes.
So you, once again, you have emphasized this idea that the state changes are driving what we're seeing here by way of these increases. Any conversation happening at the state level by way of funding for, this is another one of those situations where we hit a policy change, it's fine, right? We're serving more people, so that's great. But did dollars follow at all, or is there any going to be an attempt to suggest that maybe the state participate?
Yeah, I would say, as I believe Eric pointed out, that we are not the only county that is, is dealing with this. So I'm hopeful that there will be some recognition at the state level. They are looking at waivers in general and how they're structured and how the rates and all of that, and how the state, the portion that they pay and how all of that factors into it. So no, I don't think the state's going to come save the day, but I think there is the opportunity that there could be some better outlook, because if this is a structural problem across the state, we're not going to be the only ones asking for that. I think it's also important to add a little bit of color to that idea of the waiver waiting list changes. So just by quick way of background, the way it used to work was that anybody in the state could get on a waiting list in any county, and you didn't have to show need, you didn't have to necessarily be receiving services anywhere, you could just put your name on the list. So prior to 2020, we had a list of, I think it was four to 6,000 people, but some of them didn't have immediate needs, some of them didn't even live in the county. The idea was you put your name on the list in every county, and if a waiver opens up, maybe you move to that county. But it wasn't accurate at showing the need that was out there. And so the state recognized that we could have a better list that's more accurate of need, and they instituted this new system where there's a standardized assessment across the state that you request a waiver, the standardized assessment is delivered, and if you qualify for a waiver under that, then we know that you have a need. Then at that point, there's not an opportunity to put somebody on the waiting list. So that was kind of the, the trade-off, that there was a cleanup of these lists that weren't reflective of need. But in, in that trade-off is the requirement to provide services to people.
How many people then were added to the rolls?
I don't know.
That change took place in Hamilton County.
Yeah, so the, the total cost for that change was around 7.7 million.
Okay.
I mean, I guess if we look at this net change here, we're looking at about 200-ish people between 2020 and 2023. But I know our financial, financial team kind of crunched those numbers, and it was around 7.7 million annually.
Again, good news. We're serving more people, and that's great news. But I think maybe we do need to advocate to the state to maybe help financially, because if, if all 88 counties are in the same predicament, then maybe there will be some movement at the state level. So I'll speak for myself, happy to go advocate on behalf of DD up at the state level.
We will let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas, did you have a question?
I think the question was just answered for me.
The money?
Yeah.
Unfunded mandate?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I think you have the support of this, this board.
I will say, in our consultants review, in looking at fund balances and the number of fund balances in other counties for these levies, what they found was 81 out of 88 counties were using their fund balances from their levies to manage what everyone is dealing with right now.
Thank you. Awesome. Okay, well, thank you very much. What's the next, what's the timeline or next news?
Next, well, the next, I'll go through Family Services and Treatment because the timeline will be the same.
Okay, okay, we'll go to the next.
And for Family Services and Treatment, we have the Chair of that Subcommittee here as well, which is Kristi Coons, coming up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I serve as the Chair for the Tax Library Review Committee Family Services and Treatment Committee, and our other members of that committee are Jeanette Hargraves and Jenny O'Donnell. So we are also recommending that funding stay at its current level, which is to renew it. As you all know, the primary purpose is to provide treatment for individuals in the criminal justice system who are there related to their alcohol and drug use. Typically, these are low-security risk individuals, and any participation in the programs are voluntary. Through our review process, we have several recommendations for improvements and to the Some of those, sorry, some of those recommendations are to repurpose inpatient beds at Talbot House for other programs and courts, as adapted beds are not being utilized by the drug court; to continue discussions with Talbot House and judicial partners about utilization of beds at 1617 Reading Row to right-size utilization and funding for the facility; to utilize the levy funding to support the newly established care pods; to utilize the funding to support additional prevention programming, which may include the 513 Relief Bus; to use general funding to cover sheriff's overtime costs instead of levy funding; and to provide additional funding to pre-trial services to cover a new position to reentry, and, excuse me, to cover a new position for pre-trial services, and two new positions for reentry; and to prevention first to cover programming and operational expenses. We are strongly recommending that the Mental Health Recovery and Services Board, with TLRC approval and support from treatment programs, use flexibility in contracting to shift funding between programs or into new programs based on utilization and community needs, i.e. housing, transportation, and other wraparound services. The Mental Health Recovery and Services Board and their process should work to bring at minimum the county courts and departments, including pre-trial services and the sheriff, as well as providers together to make informed decisions on program utilization and community need. The TLRC requests that county administration work with them and levy programs to develop MOUs for these levy services, and that these MOUs be complete, completed and shared with the TLRC no later than December 31st of 2024. And I believe that's our update. Is there something else? You know, we all know Lisa runs the show, so make sure I have permission from her to, to pause. Is there something else you?
I think that covers everything. I would make sure to note, and we've got recidivism listed in the bottom of these bullets and the staff person as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you said that, the staff person.
Yeah, those were, I read those exactly.
Can you reiterate, you're recommending it to be what?
Okay, so I, now I get it. The main thing that you all want to hear, which is what I started at, but I will end on that same note, that we are recommending a flat levy, no increase at the current millage, which is .34.
Yeah, that's what the taxpayers wanted to hear, not us.
The taxpayers wanted to hear. I thought they might have an interest in these services.
Of course, the services are great. They want to keep the service at the same cost.
But I began with the money, and I should end with the money. So that's where we are.
No, that's great. Thank you, Kristi Coons and your committee. Thank you very much for all your time. I'll open up for questions, though. Don't go anywhere. I can't get off that easily. Vice President Drew House.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you to the committee for all the work on this one. So I do have a question, and it would be helpful, and Lisa, I don't know if you have this, when you talk about shifting the monies around, because it's flat, and so we're dealing with the same amount of money, but you're talking about some shifts within those dollars. I think it would, it would be helpful, at least from my vantage point, to see what the recommendations are. You kind of, you talked about them, you listed them out, but I didn't catch all of them. And so helping us understand how, all this interaction between the beds that are, are not being utilized, what the court's doing related to that, inpatient outpatient services, you know, all this kinds of stuff. You talked about the sheriff, you talked about reentry, which is kind of our bull of wax. And so could you, I don't know if you've got it already, like a graph to just piece out, you know, what, what you're talking about, maybe flexing a little bit and what you're, because you mentioned trying to fund other things, and I'm just wondering where that money is coming from.
So the idea is the flexibility. So it's not to switch around buckets right now, and I'll let Lisa also, you know, obviously chime in, but it's for the experts to make the decision based on community needs, how the dollars may need to flex. So we wouldn't want to, you know, take money away where we're seeing less utilization right, you know, right away, because then if the trend changes and now we're seeing higher utilization, then that agency may not have the resources necessary to address that current community need. But at the same time, if it's not being utilized and community members' needs are shifting to another area, we want to be able to shift those funds over there. Those funds may shift within the same agency because we do have, you know, we've mentioned Talbot House a couple of times in here, they have a very robust ability to address multiple needs in multiple ways. And so it may be shifting from one area of the organization or entity to another, as opposed to shifting from the entity altogether to a different entity. That is something that is available as, as a resource, but that's the, the goal is to not have it so strict and to be able to pivot and move as necessary with that flexibility.
That's really helpful. And so then, as you talk about that flexibility, who does the evaluation, and how often does it happen where you, you take a look at that pot of money and say, this is the trend, this, so are you evaluating as we go here in the next five years?
That's what we've asked the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board to serve in that capacity, to, to look at the totality of circumstances, both within the agencies, within the community, and within the courts, and to make that analysis between all three of those factors and decide where the community would be best served with the funding allocations. And we want them to do that in conjunction with the traditional agencies that are part of this levy, to get their input as to what they're seeing on the ground.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's awesome. I like that flexibility because the, the needs do change, and we don't want to be stuck if that's, you know, we see that with the drugs. Well, you're dealing with one drug, then you come with a new drug, but if we stuck with just that drug, we can't. And that's why I like our QRTs and what they're doing. So that's great. Commissioner Dumas, you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Thank you for your presentation. I really liked the part about utilizing the board as a clearinghouse for the levy. And so when I think about treatment, all of us are on the One Ohio Foundation, and millions of dollars are coming down for exactly what's on here, the drug court, recovery court. And so I am part of the treatment committee that will be deciding on the applications that come in to approve. So not only is this flat, but if there's a need or a gap, that some of that money can be funneled into more treatment. So that's great. So this is a great plan, and I love that it's flat, too. But this is, this is really good. You guys have really worked really hard, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And you mentioned all the court, the Office of Reentry. You may have said this, but I want people to also know this is the Veterans Court as well. It's a part of this, so. All right, well, y'all are doing a great job right now, squeezing and holding the line.
I will add also, with the One Ohio funding, this levy allows the community treatment dollars for corrections within Hamilton County to be spent outside of the One Ohio funding, so it opens up that funding for a whole, a slew of other community providers as well.
Okay, what we got next?
Timeline is next.
All right.
Switch it right over. That's basically the last slide as well. Thank you, Kristi. Next up is next Monday, the Commissioners will be holding an evening public hearing for both of the levies at 6:00 PM at the Board of Elections, Hamilton County Board of Elections, and then a hearing at 1:00 PM, same time as this meeting, as well on Tuesday, July 2nd, in this location, Todd Portune Center. Also at that meeting on Tuesday, we will be bringing forward resolutions for an auditor certificate of millage, both of those for flat renewals of these levies at .34 mils and 4.13 mils. If there are additional millage considerations, we will need auditor certificates to be done for any other considerations that the Commissioners would want to address. So if we can get those in advance of that meeting, we would have those prepared as well. Once we receive the certificates back from the auditor, those will go with our ballot resolutions, which are already prepared, again, for renewal levies, and those are scheduled to be presented to the Commissioners at their meeting on Thursday, July 18th.
Awesome. I just want to say, great job. We'll have those dates on our website, so people can have input. And I want to say, Lisa Webb and your team and TLRC, you guys have done a great job. I'll open it up if there's anything else. Vice President Drew House wants to add?
I want to reiterate that thanks to everybody. I know this is a lot of hard work. You can see it in these reports. And thank you to the departments for being good partners in all of this, and the Mental Health and Recovery Services Board for taking a lead role here in evaluation, so that I think the, look, everybody's working really well together to put this in front of us flat in both cases, and I know that took some doing. So, so thank you so much for, for all the work that you've done. And I just do want to remind people, we're putting this in front of the voters to vote on. This is not the final say here, but rather giving the voters an opportunity to vote on these levies in November.
Absolutely. Additionally, any information regarding these levies or any other levies and past reviews are on the Hamilton County website and within the Tax Library Review Committee pages, if anyone from the public wants to go and just click around and have a look.
Commissioner Dumas?
I just had a quick comment you brought up about the voters, and I wrote a note. Maybe we need to clarify, even though it seems very simple, that it's flat. What does a yes vote mean on the ballot, and what does a no vote mean?
Absolutely. So a no vote would be no levy at all across the board, and especially as it comes to developmental disabilities, that is no revenue for the next year at a minimum for that levy for services for their clients.
And the reason why I say that, there are some people that were in here, residents, groups that are saying they're not going to vote for any levies, they don't care if it's flat or whatever, so we need to be very careful.
Yes. The levy, the local levy is our, our local funding for mandated services for developmental disabilities in Hamilton County. It's not coming from anywhere else, and it is mandated, it has to come from somewhere, and if it wasn't the levy.
And everyone will get... And everyone will get a chance.
If it wasn't the levy, it would be the general fund.
It would be the general fund. Finish that sentence out. That's, that's striking.
And you're talking about, like, ninety million dollars a year?
Yeah, that's huge.
Of expenses, sure.
So at the public hearing, everyone will get a chance to
Correct.
Come here, get educated and
Right. Monday night at the Board of Elections, Tuesday afternoon hearing.
So I just want people to know there's a board. We have, we do have public hearings. You will be able to be heard. Did you have anything else to add to that? I, I do want to say, I did not allow our, our Mental Health Board, if you wanted to say a word, I apologize, I didn't allow DDS to say something.
Lenora Godfrey, the President and CEO of the Mental Health Recovery Services Board, and we just want to thank you, Board of County Commissioners, as well as the T L R C and Lisa, because it, it is a difficult task to come in, and the consultants did a great job of looking at the programs. We contract with about four or five of the agencies that will receive funding, but not all the agencies that receive funding from this levy, but I can stand here and say thank you for it going forward flat, and we're thrilled that you're thrilled that we are a part of this process. We're committed to looking at outcomes, we're committed to working with the T L R C and Lisa as far as the review of those programs that we know, and, and keeping a pulse on the need in the community, and that's where that flexibility comes in. We have the ability to shift when the need changes. So we're thrilled to go into this next levy period and meet the needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, Lisa, you gave us the timeline.
One tiny little addition, which is probably important to the public as well, and that is a flat renewal of the family services and treatment levy is seven dollars even per hundred thousand dollar home, and the developmental disabilities levy is a hundred and one dollars per hundred thousand dollar home.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll see everybody at the public hearing. Thank you all very much. Okay, next on the agenda, enterprise zone agreement, coding systems. Got Harry Blanton from Alloy Development and Ron Ritter from Coding Systems.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and
It's John.
John.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. John Ritter.
I was going to introduce him.
That's a famous name, isn't it?
Yeah, like Three's Company.
Yeah, Three's Company, too. Hell, yeah, okay.
I'm old enough to remember.
One of my favorite shows.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Harry Blanton with the Economic Development Office. As you mentioned, we have an enterprise zone agreement proposal with Coding Systems in the city of Harrison. With me today are John Ritter, the President and CEO of Coding Systems, Matt Eisenbrunn, the Economic Development Director of the City of Harrison, and Michael Witten with Alloy. As, I'm sorry, I need to put up the presentations. As you can see in the presentation, Coding Systems is going to be almost doubling the size of their building. They currently have twenty thousand square feet, and they're going to be adding eighteen thousand square feet. They recently signed a long-term agreement with a large O-ring manufacturer, and Coding Systems basically puts coding, as it, as it says in their name, on metal and rubber products for their clients. And so they recently received a large contract. They work in the automotive industries, appliances, small electronics, and what they're going to be doing is adding a large eighteen thousand square foot warehouse under their current building. These are some of the details of the project, total of a million dollars, about nine hundred thousand dollars actually for the construction of the building, ninety thousand in machinery equipment, thirty thousand for inventory. As I mentioned, not only they increasing the size of their building, but they're going from twenty-two employees to thirty-five, so they're going to be adding about fifty percent more employees, and those jobs pay about forty-four thousand dollars for entry level positions, so. Those are the basic details. We are recommending a seventy-five percent enterprise zone agreement for four years, and the city of Harrison, as I mentioned, is here to support it, and Coding Systems also is here, if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay, thank you. If you just, someone's here from Harrison. Can we hear from them?
Sure.
And I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I appreciate it. The city of Harrison is very supportive of the opportunity here to work with Coding Systems. They are a, a longtime community member, came to us and, and basically like to grow our own. It's an opportunity for us to show members of the community what we can do by working together and the directions that we can go. They're homegrown, they support the community, they support our schools. Anytime there's an opportunity to work with an organization that is looking to do outreach for various reasons, either workforce or supporting things, Coding Systems is always there. They are the type of jobs, and it's the type of industry that we're looking for, it's the type of jobs and industry that I think the region and the state is looking for, high-tech, advanced manufacturing. It maybe seems simple what they're doing, but the, the types of processes that they bring to the table are very important to us. And they also feed back to the greater community. I, I've had a couple of conversations, and I would like to let you know that they have participated with other economic development organizations by way of getting technical assistance, learning new processes going, and learning how to do some of the things that other organizations might have specialty in. And then at the end, they give back as well. So they're more than willing to participate if there's another company or there's another organization looking for their special needs and knowledges, they're certainly willing to provide that. So they're a great opportunity for us to, again, commend, support, and, and, and work with a, a great community member. Last thing I would say, it's a great project from an economic development perspective specifically, because it's bringing property that I would not have access to as a developer to bring additional jobs. It is an expansion, it's the exact kind of projects that we're working for. We'd like to, again, grow our own, continue to do those kinds of work, and, and again, I think it's just a great opportunity for us. So we are very supportive. If there's any questions or anything I can answer for you, let me know.
Okay, well, sit tight. I want to bring up the famous John Ritter, president of Coding Systems. Do you like to say a word at your company?
We've been around since nineteen seventy-five. My father started the business. We were located out in Carthage until nineteen eighty-eight. We specialize as a finished job shop, so manufacturers make product, and we either meet the requirements of blueprints and specs to finish the product, or we come up with a solution to make a great design that doesn't work so great work better. Some of the ideas that we have, we're actually, have always been problem solvers. We feel like we're partners with our customers. We serve our customers really well. We've, we're one of the first ISO certified facilities in coding services, which occurred in nineteen ninety-six. Here I got married, so easy to remember that. And that's helped us a lot. We've been able to go after our competition in the special field of coating rubber O-rings. We coat about, last year was a little over two hundred and fifty million O-rings, seals and gaskets. We have special engineered equipment to do that. We're definitely the top of the field in terms of our competition, and that's the reason we've landed this large contract, which will expand our business by, you know, a hundred percent actually. By the end of twenty-six, we feel like we should be at a half a billion parts a year. I would love to say that it's going to trickle in, kind of, because we're having growing pains right now. Labor is extremely difficult to acquire. Rates are up by thirty-three percent in the past two years. Inflation has taken hold. The cost of materials has taken hold. We've been rather sacrificial in our gross profit in order to be very competitive, to bring business our way. And then we get hit with things like coating cost, freight cost, labor cost, and environmental cost. PFOS is probably a common term you guys are familiar with. If anyone's watched the documentary on DuPont, it's an asset that's within every living organism practically, and we're trying to reduce that emission. So we're working on, Teflon is a big part of our business. We apply functional coatings like Teflon to O-rings, and it's used in the automotive industry, aerospace, just about everything. So we're developing PFOS-free alternatives to Teflon and presenting those to our customers. We're a global supplier. We have customers in Europe, we have customers in Mexico, Canada, Italy, all over the place, and they all appreciate our efforts doing that. But those PFOS-free materials are more expensive. So again, there goes the gross profit, and this abatement will help us out tremendously.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, I'm gonna, thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
And, in the background
Sure.
Giving us the Cliff Notes of what you do. And it's good to know, coming right out of Hamilton County, Harrison, Ohio, global.
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's amazing. I'm gonna open it up for Vice President Drew House.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation from all that testified, all three. So a couple of questions for you. The, a large contract that you have received, can you help us understand, is it coming from any place in Ohio, or you, or is it somewhere else?
Well, it's actually, so the work that we're taking from a competitor is coming out of, out of Tennessee.
Okay.
The primary customer is headquartered out of Cleveland, their SEAL division is based out of Lexington. And, you know, ideally, because freight, they'd love for me to set up and integrate into their facility, but it's just not cost effective. And so I've been able to convince them to, through pricing and appropriate service times, accommodate them here and there.
Just stay where you are. Yeah. I'm just wondering, because we talk a lot about supply chain related to Honda and Intel and some of the things that are happening in Ohio, so I didn't know if this was related to any of that, or if it was just
It's interesting that you bring up Intel. You're talking about the chip manufacturing up in Columbus, under nine hundred acres, right? So we have a division of CSI, it's a small LLC called Whitewater Solutions, Matt's sort of shared some of that with you. Basically, over the past thirty years, I've been involved with several manufacturers and engineers. They just all come to me and, or through work, through, I'm serving, serving them, right? So I make great relationships. Along the way, people come to me now and say, hey, Ritter, how would you, how would you do this? And normally I have a contact or just knowledge from my experiences. So a couple of years ago, a physicist came to me and said, hey, we've got an issue with tap-to-pay credit cards, and we can't get a metal credit card to transmit a signal in any configuration. But this physicist designed a slit in the card, and basically I got a patent on how to fill that slit and allow for a signal to go through. And this is kind of a long way to get it to it, but it's a conformal coating that's UV curable. It's used in the electronics industry, big time. All circuit boards, all electronics use conformal coatings that are UV curable. There is potential for us to expand the business in that direction. These are definitely high-tech pieces of equipment and high-tech operators. You know, you just can't throw anyone on, on a machine. So we can train, and we train everyone. No one knows how to coat an O-ring. You don't go to school for that, you come to CSI to learn about that. And we would plan to do the same thing with those operators, but it would also render some positions for management that would be, you know, higher paying jobs as well.
Yeah, that's great. I would, yeah, so, and, and just very quickly, I don't want to take too much time, but the diagram that we have and the footprint of your property, so you're expanding, is it, I can't get a sense of it, is it mostly industrial around you?
It is.
It looks like it is, yeah.
You all are probably familiar with JTM.
Yes.
We're right next door.
Okay.
So we're right on the corner of that lot of JTM manufacturing space.
Okay.
Right next door to them. And I don't know if you have the image, yeah, you have the image in front of you. From our building out to Campbell Road, there is space there for
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, as you talk about future expansion, perhaps I was just wondering what is around you. So thank you. And lastly, I just want to say, I appreciate the work you're doing
Thank you.
Related to Forever Chemicals. I mean, it's important, that's where we're headed, so thank you for being a forerunner in that work, even though it's more expensive. Thanks for taking the risk.
Thanks to future.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up, Commissioner Dumas, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. Some of them were answered. I was wondering about the specialized training. So you actually provide the training
Yes, ma'am.
Then off the street.
Yep.
Okay. And also, I was wondering about the vacant land you were saying where you're located, but eighteen thousand square feet additional. Seems like when you look at the map, there is some residential not too far away.
Correct, yeah. So the building, I'm sorry, your question?
My question was, as it relates to the residential
I might have impeded on there, yeah. So along the side of our, our building currently, there's probably four or five houses. I don't know if that's north-south these way. Well, let's say on the left side of the square, of the red square, there's maybe three or four houses there. It's going to extend downward on the bottom edge of that square. It's actually, would be further away from the next two houses, but there's actually some privacy there. One has a fence and another has shrubbery growing, but I don't know. We've never had any complaints from neighbors regarding
Were you aware of the possible expansion?
That I'm not sure. We've not knocked on doors or
The city of, can you step up to the microphone? We'll ask the city representative.
Yeah, I don't know if the, if the neighbors are specifically aware of that. We did have a public hearing. There is expansion work going on at JTM continuously, so there's a, a great awareness that more projects are coming down the line. I would also mention, on the west side of that, as you saw, to the left of the, the red box, there is a drainage swale, so there, there is overgrowth there, there is a noise abatement that's going to take place naturally there, so water will drain to the south. Across the street from their facility is the great Miami River.
The Whitewater.
Whitewater River, sorry. I've only been around nine months or so, so I'm still getting the, the names, but the Whitewater River is right down there, so that, that comes down.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then I see in your proposal, there is also an increase in employees, and that's great. And I believe that the tax abatement of seventy-five percent for four years is very reasonable, because some people come
Left money on the table.
Left a few dollars, yeah.
Oh, no, I appreciate it.
So, and then I'm happy for you.
Thank you.
Because I was reading on here, you said this agreement will increase sales and has potential to increase revenue significantly
Yes.
By twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
You're doing a great thing.
We just need to find people. We need to find people out there to work for us. I think we could actually increase the number of employees to thirty or thirty-five within this year, if we had them. I mean, that's, it's going to be a real growing pain issue.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm supportive of this.
Awesome. Appreciate it. Is that all you had?
That's it.
Okay, and then I wanted to reiterate again, it says the city of Harrison passed a resolution. So we always ask if the residents, so obviously there was a resolution passed by the city of Harrison on June eighteenth, and then I also like the fact that you said that CSI is a, not just a business, but is part of the fabric of the city of Harrison. You, you know, you're there, you're sponsoring events and in the community, you're of the community, so that's all great as well, that you're reinvesting in the, the local community there, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Got some great names, John Ritter, CSI, I mean, man, who could go against that type of combination?
Right.
Two of my favorite shows here. Yeah, so, thank you, and I guess what you'll tell us our next step, Harry? Harry, will you step up, tell us next step?
Yes, this will be on your agenda for, on July second, a week from today, and we appreciate all of your questions and your support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. All righty. Next on the agenda, community revitalization grant recommendations. Tell the folks in Harrison we said hello. Tell the folks in Harrison we said hello. I was out there, and they said, we don't see, what's the county doing? Tell them we got one coming, another one coming for Harrison. Okay. All right.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kelly Adamson. I'm a Senior Economic Development Officer here. And today I'll be sharing with you the recommendations for the 2024 Hamilton County Community Revitalization Grant. A $2.75 million investment by the county to support the progression and completion of crucial projects in county villages, townships, and cities. And the projects we recommend today are key contributors to the economic growth of each community. And to go over a brief refresher. So the board dedicated this funding in 2021 to create a new resource for our suburban communities with the goal of helping them build a healthy, vibrant, and sustainable economic future. An emphasis is placed on significant and highly impactful projects. However, funding may be awarded to a variety of community prioritized projects. And as we have received another competitive round of applications this year, which is great, we have also acknowledged that the need continues. And this program remains an important tool to spur on economic growth for our Hamilton County communities. So to share a quick snapshot, 19 applications were submitted from 17 different communities, totaling approximately 5.3 million in requests. Therefore, unfortunately, we are unable to recommend funding for all applications. And then also passing along, and you can see our project categories listed up here. And then to provide a brief snapshot before I go over in summary the ones that we are recommending, a couple of things to point out. Out of all the applicants, 11 have received prior grant funding, which is noted on the column in the right-hand side. And then we do have recommendations to reduce funding for four projects. And these communities were contacted. And each community gave verbal confirmation that their projects will still move forward, even with a reduction in funding. And we do have eight projects we are not recommending for funding. These projects either did not fulfill or align with the intention of the Community Revitalization Grant. And with, also with it being a very, very competitive year, just ranked lower in project impact. An additional note specific to the Village of Marymont. They were not recommended for funding as, since they applied, they have received a CEDAP grant to fund their specific request in full. We also want to bring awareness to the board that we personally reach out to each of these communities for notification and provide guidance and advice on how to strengthen their application for future rounds. A little note on, you know, review criteria and evaluation. The committee reviewed the applications and made recommendations based on project impact and project need, which you can see a little bit more detail up here on the slide, along with project support, and then applicant capacity. And with this, I'm going to be forward with a brief summary of the recommended projects. However, if you have any questions or comments, feel free to interrupt at any time. So first up is the Village of Addison, recommending $140,000, requesting $140,000, and we are recommending the full amount. This project implements recommendations of a US-50 and dining lane intersection study to improve the safety and accessibility of the village. Proposed improvements will enhance connectivity, create jobs, and help increase economic reinvestment in the area. Next up is Amberly Village. They are requesting $290,000, and we are recommending the full amount. This is for demolition of a village-owned abandoned golf course, clubhouse, excuse me, to unlock over eight acres of land for commercial development. Redevelopment plans are outlined in a Conservation and Community Connectivity Plan. And then they had strong job creation as a part of later phases. The next project we have is the City of Blue Ash, and they are requesting $500,000. We are recommending a reduced amount of $412,136. And this is for a project called The Blue. So this is 125 million mixed-use development in downtown Blue Ash, which aligns with the City of Blue Ash Comprehensive Plan. The six acre project will have a total economic input of 150 million, creating approximately 650 new jobs. The next project is Coal Rain Township, requesting $28,000, and we are recommending the full amount. This project is a part of the Northgate Tomorrow Plan and a strategy to redevelop Northgate Mall. Funds will assist with the identification of all existing utilities, disconnects, and the recommendation of a full demolition plan. Coal Rain Township will be engaging in a request for proposal process for the future redevelopment of the site into a mixed-use redevelopment. The next project is for the City of Loveland. They are requesting $640,000, and we are recommending a reduced amount of $500,000. This project is the acquisition of a vacant and blighted 1.6-acre property on the Loveland-Madera Road, which will then be demoed for future property development and allow for a commercial owner and therefore job creation. This project helps to implement a portion of the City of Loveland Comprehensive Master Plan and complements nearby economic development projects, such as the Loveland-Madera Road Corridor Revitalization Project. The next project is City of Madera, requesting $250,000, and we are recommending the full amount. This project is a part of the City of Madera's 2023 Comprehensive Plan to reconstruct 1.2 miles of a major corridor through the city's main commercial and residential area. Improvements increased will enhance pedestrian connectivity and benefit their many local businesses along the corridor, and also will encourage additional investment. And project upgrades will also be supporting access to public transit for nearby residents, including nearby senior centers. The next project is for the Village of Newtown, requesting $50,000, and we are recommending the full amount. This project will support upgrading traffic signal technology for a major regional traffic thoroughfare in Newtown. This assist with the reduction of traffic congestion creates safer access for residents, consumers, employees, and also increases economic activity for about 100 local businesses in that area. The next project is for the City of Sharon, is from the City of Sharonville, requesting $400,000, and we are recommending a partial funding of $300,000. So this project is an expansion on the city's existing Small Business Facade Program. This expansion is targeted towards investing in the build-out of underutilized and vacant spaces with various tenant improvement projects. This also will include helping to create ADA-compliant spaces. And the goal is to attract new businesses and increase their business expansions, which is a part of the city's Economic Development Strategy and the City of Sharonville's Comprehensive 2030 Plan. This next one is for the Village of St. Bernard, requesting $300,000, and we are recommending partial funding of $200,000. This project is a continuation of the redevelopment of the former St. Bernard Shopping Center on Vine Street, which is in the very heart of their business district. The Village of St. Bernard was awarded $339,000 in the Community Revitalization Grant funding in 2023 for the demolition of the shopping center to make way for St. Bernard Square, a mixed-use development. And with any large, significant projects, they have had some challenges. And so to progress this project forward, St. Bernard requested $300,000, the cost for a final tenant relocation assistance of $100,000, and delays to allow, delays with relocating the remaining tenant. They wanted to have acquisition to allow for free and clear ownership of the property, and that would be $200,000. And staff recommended funding for the portion of the grant of $200,000 to help cover the cost of acquisition and ensure the progression and completion of a really critical community project. The next project is for Sycamore Township, requesting $300,000, and we are recommending full funding. This project is a part of the Reading Road Corridor Plan. This is for the Canterbury Gardens Project, a revitalization project that will transform 27 buildable acres to prep for an industrial site, which will help drive economic growth for the Reading Road Corridor. And this is projected to generate 320 jobs with annual wages of over 20 million. And just a note for the board, this site has previously been supported by Hamilton County, including Hamilton County Planning and Development, spearheading an economic and real estate strategy for this plan. And the final project we have is the Village of Woodlawn, requesting $279,869, and we are recommending the full amount. And this one is to construct a parking lot on 3.9 acres of property, which is an industrial property home to many businesses, including two of the village's largest employers. This supports retention, business retention, as employers are outgrowing their current parking needs and will incorporate amenities which complement the businesses that are there. And this project will retain approximately 500 jobs and as part of the village's current economic development strategy. As we're at the end of those recommendations, we wanted to provide a follow-up visual overview of the 2024 recommendations that I just went over. And, you know, to us, it looks like a fairly balanced distribution. And again, we're recommending 11 applications, and this will be totaling $2.75 million. And then this second map here is to, as we're in the fourth year of the Community Revitalization Grant, we're in four years now. And so we wanted to show you the history of investment. The ones, previous grant recipients are in blue, and then the recommended ones for 2024 are in the striping there. And this has, this investment and community partnership has resulted in the awarding of over $9.8 million. And this is for, has been in 38, 38 projects across 24 communities. So again, that's $9.8 million, 38 projects across 24 communities. So certainly, hopefully, this demonstrates to the board, you know, that this broad and significant investment that has occurred in the county since the beginning of this program. So I want to thank you both, all for your time today. And then I'd be happy to take any questions, which the board may have at this time.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm gonna open it up to Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you. Thanks, Kelly, for the presentation. I, a couple of things just to note. The, the amount of request was, what is it, about double the amount that we had available for the grant? So I do want to note that I think it's important that we recognize that there are projects. Because I didn't, as I was reading through the projects that were not funded, I didn't see a lot of, they weren't eligible, or it just, we didn't have enough money to fund all of them, even though some of them were eligible. They just ranked lower with the criteria than the projects that were funded. So I do want to note that. Because this, this program, you know, as you say, has been going on for three years, but there's a lot of enthusiasm for it out in these jurisdictions outside the city of Cincinnati. I also think it's noteworthy that the ones that are funded, as I look through the list and whether or not they receive previous funding, it's about half and half. You know, about half of them did, about half of them didn't. And so I am super interested in spreading this around. And so I'm glad you showed the maps of what we've done in the past and what we're, or is being recommended this time. And then of the ones that did not get funded, most of them have received funding in the past. And so I, again, just kind of noting these as highlights. So with some of them that weren't funded, in case we hear feedback from some of these communities, can you generalize and tell us generally why? Or was it a matter of funding? Was it a matter of less of an economic development impact from some of these? Were the dollar amounts so high that it wasn't reasonable to fund some of the projects? I mean, what was the overall, if you can, generalization about some of the ones that did not get funded?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. I would say, you know, there were, there were two of them, about two of them, that the projects didn't align as well, as well with the intent of the grant. So there are certainly ones where if there are other funding opportunities within Hamilton County, we'd be happy to help guide them to where they could obtain funding from and/or connect them with Alloy to assist them with these projects in other regards as well, like within kind services. And then I would say that the other handful of them, so more of the majority of them, also is still aligned with the grant, but simply just when we really weighed that impact, just fell a little lower in the ranking. So that's where, when we do reach out, we'll say, you know, as if this project does, is decided to continue, we'll help to work with them, to guide them, and help strengthen their applications where possible.
And you mean that by way of the opportunity for future funding through this grant? Because it's an annual grant. And so you helped them understand what the deficit was and how they can do better in the next round? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, exactly. Yeah. And we did try to, we did reduce about four of them with funding because we wanted to try to stretch the dollar as much as we could. But like you said, with about half, you know, with, with 50% over the requested funding of what we had in the budget, it was just, it was a tough one this year. So it's a very important, it's certainly a really important grant program. And we continue to spread, spread the word to the communities about it. So the interest has certainly gone up, which is...
I was gonna ask you, that was my next question. So has interest gone up? I mean, I don't remember in the previous rounds how, how overs prescribed they were. So this is about double the amount was asked for than what we had available. Was that true of the last couple of rounds? I know it was more, but was it that much? Or is there more interest as we go?
I would say there's certainly more interest as we go. I was looking back, and the, there was a higher rec, funding, funding requested. It was in year 2022 or 2023. I can get back to you with that one. This was not the highest year, but it was one of the higher years in funding requests that we've...
Right. Unfair to ask you that, because you're fairly new to the county. So I apologize. I was looking at Holly asking you the question. So I apologize for that. Okay, well, thank you for the work. I mean, I am really excited about this grant in particular, because we initiated this just a few years ago, trying to be good partners with some of the jurisdictions outside the city to be sincere about our partnership related to economic development. So, and they drive the projects themselves. They apply for what they think is the most important project. And then we try to fund it to the best of our ability with the limited funds that we have. So I appreciate the evaluation. I'm sure that is not an easy task, going through these and trying to figure out what rises to the top and what doesn't. So thank you for your work on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation. I love the maps. It really exemplifies what we're doing and how we've increased what we're doing, not only the money, but the areas that we're covering. I'm actually in love right now. And the reason why I am is I remember coming in '19 when I first came here. And one of the items that I focused so much on my campaign is that we need to spread our wings. We need to go beyond Cincinnati and go out to those other communities, those other villages and townships, because they are part of Hamilton County. So I'm like, I'm just so excited right now to see what we're doing, how this has developed in the last four years. 11 of the 19 were funded before, which is okay. But also the ones that were not funded have been funded before, from what I can look at. They weren't funded this year, but they were funded before. It's just unbelievable how this grant has developed and how we're meeting for the residents what we said we were going to do, which is to be inclusive of the whole county. So I couldn't be happier. I know some of the ones we have to know are not very happy, but they have an opportunity to come back. We couldn't help everybody, but we are helping so many areas in the county. And I think you said 9.8 million has been spent so far on this grant. And it couldn't be better. We're fulfilling our obligation and the vision of this whole grant. So I'm just really happy about it. Thank you so much. Your presentation was awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good one. I concur on that. She's so great. It's wonderful.
That's right.
We concur.
And I'm almost as happy as a treehouse about the garages.
I appreciate that.
Look, and I'm in the middle. Okay.
Initiated this one, too.
No, but excited. We know that we couldn't do everyone. I did have a question about Northgate Mall, though, in terms of what's happening there. The movie theater done gone. Everything's gone. Do they have a... The movie theater done gone, everything's gone. Do they have a real plan for the area?
They do. In their, in their application, they spoke to this North Gate Tomorrow Plan, which was actually drawn together by, they've, they've worked with Miami University and are, their students, their economic development students, that have drafted together a plan. And they're looking at the redevelopment into a mixed-use development. So they do have a plan. We'd be happy to share with you that, that outlines like further specifics for that, for that one as well. Because they're looking at just redeveloping it into an entirely new mixed, mixed-use properties, but have a lot of specifics in this North Gate Tomorrow Plan.
Yeah, because I just want to make sure when we put our money in, we're, it's leading to something. And I spent a lot of money at North Gate Mall. Maybe I didn't spend enough, I guess. But just concerned, because that is a big parcel in Corrine Township, and certainly don't want to leave that empty. When you brought up Sears, and I said, wait a minute, Sears has been gone. What are we doing over there? But just would love to see like what's going on there, how we're, what we're doing is helpful. We obviously want to be helpful in getting that moving and grooving.
Absolutely. Really, the, the most of these that we did fund are all tied to some kind of a bigger plan, which was one of our scoring criterias, and we felt that that was something that was really important. So they, they do have one. Happy to share that one.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you for the presentation. Where do we go from here?
So next steps are, we will draft up agreements, and then we'll notify the communities first, draft up the agreements, and then we'll execute those, and those will then come before the board.
Okay, great. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. So appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, JFS update on customer service initiatives.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you again. Thank you for having me this afternoon. I want to walk through today. A lot of the things we're doing at JFS from a customer service standpoint, want to make sure the commission is up to speed on all of the things that we're doing in the community, but also internally, to make sure that we are being responsive to the needs of our community. So with a PowerPoint up here, just shortlist. Thank you. All right, and so for the purpose of our presentation, also from, from our perspective as an organization, we've decided to look at our customer service initiatives in four categories. So we're looking at engagement, accountability, training, and technology. Engagement is the work that we're doing to provide outreach and education to our community, to build a better relationship and improve access to services. And what I've heard over the last couple of years related to engagement, to put it more simply, is getting out from behind the desk and getting in the community, meeting, meeting our clients where they are. Accountability is how we're going to measure what we do to ensure we're meeting customer service goals that we set for ourselves. From the training aspect, of course, we're going to make sure that we're offering, providing training that we require to make sure that our team members provide accurate, timely, and courteous service to the, to the public. And then finally, technology category is how we employ technology to make it easier for the public to engage our services and streamline our work to improve timeliness and accuracy. As you are all well aware, we have two pages of engagement, so I just kind of go through a lot of the things that we've done. This is really not even an all-inclusive list, but in the interest of time, I listed some of the things that we have been acting on over the last couple of years. And obviously, the 513 Relief Bus, our JFS Community Engagement Team has been a key component, providing an array of services on the 513 Relief Bus in the community. We can now meet the community where they are, provide access to financial support such as TANF, PRC, SNAP, Medicaid, as well as access to kinship and childcare services. Second is our Office of Systems Partnerships and Community Solutions. That is a mouthful. But last year, we combined collaborative, we combined several community-facing lines of service under one roof. Our Fatherhood Collaborative was one of those, Community Outreach Coordinator was the other, and our Clinical Children's Services Community Engagement Work are all now a part of this unit, as well as our Community Engagement Clients Rights, all reside in our Office of System Partnership and Community Solutions. The rationale behind creating that was that we had a really disparate approach to how we were engaging the community from different divisions across the agency. So we felt like it was important to put them under one roof to make sure that we were looking at how we were engaging the community, what information we were requesting from the community, and how we were being responsive to that. So we have our Assistant Director, Talia Bryan, who leads that effort, has done a really exceptional job making sure that all of those entities talk to one another and also have an idea of what we're doing in the community. The third thing I want to point out is our relationship in the All Families Thrive Partnership with Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center to support our work in Abindale and to assist with engaging community members in the development of solutions. They've recently worked with us to provide feedback, which has informed improvement to our call center. Some of you may have heard or seen over the last year or so, we've had some challenges with our 9461000 call center. We're happy to work with Children's Hospital Medical Center and the All Families Thrive Partnership in Abindale to work with community members in that area to get feedback and insights into how we could improve that system. They've worked with us to help refine our greeting, to make it more streamlined, to make it more friendly, cut out some of the prompts that we felt were not necessary, they felt were not necessary, that really impacted their ability to get the information they needed from our organization. The Fatherhood Collaborative continues to be bimonthly, and it continues to be the primary convener in the county of professional, professionals and organizations working with fathers in Hamilton County. The Esteem Seven Event, which is held each November, recognizes fathers in the community for their contributions to the lives of their children and the community. You might have also seen our Daddies Do Hair event. They also have worked in development of a paternal, paternal depression study that they're continuing to work on to find results of what it means for fathers who are also immediately after the birth of their child and what their sort of mental state is after that, to see if there's some data there that would be helpful for the community to know about. This is not last, we have two, two slides on this, but also currently partnering with the Public Library. We're working with Cincinnati Public Library to staff downtown branch twice a month from nine to three to expand services and access and support to our, to our clients in the community. It's a long list. So second page is Forest, Forest Park Satellite Office. We're working with county administration, county facilities on a plan to offer JFS services such as document drop-off, child support payment, and submission of applications and other services. As that process develops, we've been engaged with that process and plan to make sure we have a presence there in the community to, to provide services outside of our office.
Can you in the future put satellite office?
Yes.
You say Forest-
Yeah, absolutely, satellite.
And say, we want them in Woodline, we want them in Harrison. This is our satellite office in Forest Park.
The, the second bullet point here is we're continuing to work with COHER. We should, we should have a report in August. We work with COHER to provide community focus groups to get feedback, to get a better understanding of how we can improve and enhance service delivery, particularly as it relates to our children's services work. Office of Family Voice, working to support the development in the Office of Family Voice. The office is, will be designed to hire people with lived experiences to provide support to families who are involved with children's services. We had started working on this, and there's a best model practice out of Allegheny County that we've worked with and understand has an impact on ensuring that community members that have gone through the process in children's services have an opportunity to really work with families who are involved in children's services and help guide and provide some support to them as they are navigating the system. So we're working closely with Office of Economic Inclusion to, to make sure that that program takes off and is successful. And our interest obviously is aligned with that, at Job and Family Services. We have a full-time lobby. It says translator, that really should say interpreter. We had a part-time interpreter for about a year, but we've noticed that we've had an increase in the number of clients that are coming into the lobby that are limited English proficient. And so it was important for us to make sure that we had the ability to access an interpreter as people come into the building, to make sure that we were providing the services that we're mandated to provide without delay. And so we felt like it was necessary to provide a full-time interpreter, which we currently have in the lobby of Job and Family Services. In addition to that, we have interpreter and translation contracts to make sure that all of our staff who are working with the community, for folks that are limited English, limited in their English proficiency, we can do work with them over the phone through a scheduled appointment. We can contact an interpreter, have those conversations about eligibility, about whatever service we provide. We want to make sure that we have a conversation that both parties understand, and we can deliver the services that are necessary. The third, the second bucket is accountability, and so I want to kind of go over a little bit of what, what we do relative to customer services, customer service and accountability. Through our call centers and child support, and also in our economic sustainability divisions, all of our call center systems track average speed of answer, call wait times, which are essentially the same thing. So we measure the average speed of answer in our child support and our economic sustainability call centers to track in real time how long clients are on hold. Our child support call center has maintained an average speed of answer under three minutes for the last several years. Our economic sustainability call center has been able to reduce the average speed of answer to 25 minutes for courtesy callback. And we've also, through our work with the All Families Thrive Initiative, in identifying where we could add additional support, added nine staff members to our call center for our economic sustainability division earlier this year, and that has reduced wait times to where we currently stand at 25 minutes. And that is for folks who select the courtesy callback option, which is built in through our state system. We also do call observations in all of our call centers. Managers do random call observations to ensure quality, timeliness, and courtesy of our customer contacts. We have the ability to do call recordings. We're able to pull recordings, review and receive, when we receive complaints about experiences someone has with us during our call center. So if we get information that comes to us that talks about courtesy or some misinformation, we have the ability to take a look at that to make sure that we're being consistent on our message, but also messaging, but also being professional and courteous in our interactions with the public. The data from our Office of Systems, Office of Systems Partnership and Community Solutions also tracks data related to complaints and inquiries across all of our divisions, and also acts as a civil rights coordinator for clients who believe their civil rights have been violated in the course of business with us. We're working through that as well with our HR support, who we have an MOU with to provide additional support and collaborations on any EEOC and ADA claims received from the public, and also from, obviously, from employees within the organization. From a training aspect, all of our frontline customer service representatives, all staff for that matter, attend mandatory customer service training. Our children's services frontline child welfare workers also have access to, are provided with trauma-informed care that provide them with the knowledge and skill necessary to engage with families that are, have experienced trauma, as well as giving them education and opportunity to understand how trauma affects them in the course of their work on a day-to-day basis. We also have divisional new hire training units or training managers within each of our divisions, which is child support, economic sustainability, and children's services. And all of those have an on-the-job training component built in, and they collaborate closely with operational units while, while our new hires are in training, to make sure that all of the content that is necessary and progress through that, through the training is, is being met. And so that relationship is really strong in our department as well. And then finally, related to training, we're working with our new learning management system through, through human resources to make sure that we have access to all of the tools necessary and available through our learning management system for our staff to get access to that, so that they can also progress through their professional development along with their training, as well as their, their manager. All right, fourth box is technology. We've expanded texting options. We currently work with a new provider to enhance texting options to each division as we expand ways in which we provide notifications and updates to our clients. We've worked with United Way to, we've worked with United Way to notify our clients of their tax preparation services, as one example. We're working to expand notification of appointments and due dates for verification. We send about 100,000 texts a month so far. Divisions, workforce development, our Hall Means Jobs Division, and fraud prevention have, have used the text option. For example, we've also used the text to notify our teens of the holiday party, so we know that our teens are very familiar with using mobile technology, so we use the text option to do that. We also sent a notification out to our Care Shift Ken for survey purposes, and we use the text option to notify our SNAP benefit beneficiaries of their, the Guard Your Card campaign, which is a fraud campaign, to make sure that they were aware of how to protect their SNAP benefits. We also implemented a new contracting system. The contracting system was developed and designed to streamline our internal process and reduce wait times for us to move from, I'm sorry, for us to reduce wait times and for us to move contracts through approval, as well as to bill pay. And then we have our Cincinnati Bell Telephone Solutions. Again, this, this solution, we work with this, we continue to work with the state and other counties on system improvements to our phone system and the courtesy callback solution. We're able to table, we're at the table, working with our partners at the Directors Association at the Hall Department of Job and Family Services to meet with the vendor regularly, provide feedback in order to reduce wait times even further. We encourage the use of our online porters, portals, all of our, well, most of our systems now have an online portal option where the public can go to find information about the status of their case, account lookup. They can also message us through our online portal. So all of our front-facing reception areas and call centers encourage our clients, when appropriate, to contact us through our online portals. It makes access a little easier and faster for us to process paper and also just provide services that are required. Our call center, again, tracks key metrics for responsiveness. And then just finally, I want to say we have more online service options than ever, ever before with our applications, recertifications, messaging options, options through those portals to contact us at any time. If they have questions or if they want additional service, they can contact us in that, in that way as well. So not only do we do it from a technological standpoint, we're also out in the community leveraging that technology to make sure that folks that don't, are not comfortable with technology have access to us in that way as well, so that we can capture what their needs are there. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, and I know I had asked for a presentation. One of my goals was figuring out how do we, I say come from, it's not my grandmother's, JFS. How do we go from that to, from a welfare stigma to a customer service stigma? And so I appreciate you bringing these changes that you're putting forward. There's no doubt that JFS is doing a lot of work. What I want to kind of pull all of this under an umbrella somehow to get the message out as we're, I know we're doing the rebranding and stuff like that, but then the message gets out that this is a customer service friendly place. And we've had some incidents where it wasn't that way, and I know you've come in and tried to correct them. We've had payment problems with the same two or three, what do they call, halfway houses? Vendors. And they came back two or three times, and it was kind of our, it was definitely on fault on the side of the county, not the side of the person, the small business. And we've had an issue, someone going, sending people to the wrong house, and they did, they did a little more work. They would have saw that that's not the house you're supposed to be going to. Those people don't even have children. So all of those components, have those things kind of been embodied in here? Because I know we've been having training with people, but are there some, some of those instances, and there may be others you know about, I don't know about, were those incorporated in here? And now will come with a new, fresh approach?
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's a good question. I think the, the question related to bill pay, part of what we wanted to do with our contracting system and looking at our internal process was to expedite, streamline where we could our role in entering in the contracts and, and working with a prosecutor to make sure that those were reviewed and, you know, and, and signed off on. But in addition to that, on the back end, giving our staff some additional tools to make sure that they have access to what they need in order to process those invoices timely within the contract. And so we've made a lot of progress there over the last year. So I've gotten really good feedback from our vendors that the instances of delay have, have reduced. And so a part- And so a part of, uh, what I mentioned there in terms of technology was, was implemented to, to do that, uh, as well. Uh, and we'll continue to refine that process as much as we need to, so that we're consistent in paying, uh, bills, uh, in a timely manner. Uh, and I think also, you know, anytime that we, uh, are unable to do that, that i- it's, it's too many times. So, uh, no matter how often we do it timely, if there's a, you know, if there's a challenge, then our, our role is to try to make sure that that, we, we correct that and we've worked on that, uh, really hard the last year to, to fix that. Related to, um, specific instances of, of, uh, you know, case, specific challenges, as those are part of our organizational, uh, issues that come up, we, we address those and our, our goal is to try to make sure that they don't happen again. And so, uh, as we, uh, learn about those things, obviously we want to incorporate them in our training. We want to incorporate them in our policies or procedures, particularly if there are some things that are, that fall out outside of what we're mandated to do, uh, or there decisions that are made that fall outside of that. We certainly address that on a case-by-case basis. Uh, but I don't see it as something that is prevalent or representative of a larger issue at this point in time. I think some of these instances have been isolated and we've dealt with those, uh, and, and addressed those as we've become aware of them.
Yeah, I just want to, all right, cause I don't want to get into that, because we know that's really was wrong. And they said, what kind of people y'all got working down there? You know what I'm saying? So I, what I want to make sure is what you're presenting us is now we got a new way. We're not going to have, I mean, that particular, that wasn't a case-by-case thing. That was way off the charts. Uh, and I don't want to get into, but it was way off the charts. And luckily that person didn't run and go public with it. Um, but they do want to make sure that you're training your people on certain things that are common sense. We had, uh, stationary, they sent me stationary that I wasn't even on. They still had stationary, I think, and this was, I've been here four years and I'm not even on the stationary. So I want to make sure whatever we're bringing back is not just, you know, we, you're saying this is a new way. We're never going to have these companies come in here and ain't been paid. It wasn't just that company, but companies that be paid, because we got a new, uh, data system. I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. We got a new data system and now when it goes in the data system, we've got a thing where these people will be paid in 30 days or 90 days. We have a new system, not, we touch base with them, we talk to this person and that per, because it wasn't a prosecutor's office that held up these people's money. And they kept coming back and you, you even said, I'm tired of hearing about, why is this doing this? So I'm just saying, do we get new technology where now it's like TurboTax? I could put it in, I'm, I'm, our people will get paid if they do their proper paperwork, which they did. They will get paid in 30 days or they will get paid in 90 days. We got a new customer service. Is that what we're saying with this?
Well, I, I think that's, uh, uh, what I'm, what I'm.
I don't say it had to be 30 days, but I'm saying.
Sure, within the contract.
A consistent system now, technology-wise, because that's what I'm looking for. I know that you're out in the community. I know you're doing these things. I think that's great. What I'm looking is for new customer service. You do business with JFS, we got a, a system, you get your paperwork in on time, you're going to get paid. It's called prompt pay. It's a law that I got done at, at the, uh, at the city, but do we have a prompt pay system where 90 days you will get paid if you, your step is one, two, three, you got to get your stuff in. But if you get your stuff in, on our end, we've got a new technology that will make sure that you're paid. Is that what you're saying with this?
Well, no, it's not a prompt pay system. So I want to be clear about that. We, we did not implement a prompt, uh, prompt pay technology per se. Uh, we looked at an, uh, uh, looked at our internal, uh, processes and we implemented a new system that streamlined some of the activities and brings those to the forefront of the staff that are making those decisions to process, uh, the work. And so, uh, we believe that that has made an impact on our ability to make sure that invoices are paid on time. And that's really what the goal is for us. Uh, I think there's obviously work that we can still do to see, uh, where the system, uh, as a whole can, can expedite, uh, what that process looks like. But from our perspective, from a JFS perspective, feel good about the technology that we've implemented and the updates that we're continuing to look at, uh, from a contracting perspective to make sure that we have the appropriate, um, decision points in front of folks to make decisions on time.
Okay. Well, I would like in the future, maybe looking at Mr. Ludo, um, and I don't know when it's budget time or whatever, when do I introduce it? But it would be great to say if you do, because small businesses, particular, small minority, we're trying to get more of those businesses to do more with us. And they can't, that biz, it was terrible. We did it three times, even though we said we working on it now. I would have to call them to see if it act, you know, is it working? But is it some way we could have a standardization of prompt pay? If you, you know, you could do these three things on time, they got to have their paperwork, they got to do that, that you will be paid. Cause that will help small biz. And I think we, actually I shouldn't have to introduce anything, because I think we, uh, under our, what is it? The Crouson study, wasn't that one of the bullet points, prompt pay? So if we telling everybody else to be prompt in their pay, why would we not be prompting ours?
Yeah, so, uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, uh, um, I think what, uh, Director Patton was saying was that on, on their end, that they are, have looked at streamlining, Michael and I've talked about this extensively and, um, and recognized some, some issues that were going on in that process over, over at JFS that they've been able to remedy, um, to ensure that the JFS process, uh, was moving faster and associated with a, a quicker paying system. There are other departments and agencies throughout the county that are involved in the bill paying system. So, uh, we also have to reach out to, to those and we've, we've had some discussions with, with them on this. Um, but we're hap, I'm happy to continue those conversations and see how we're doing as a whole, um, throughout the county in terms of from the time we get an invoice to the time that we actually get a vendor paid.
Yeah, I would be not just JFS, but I think we put it in the thing and we voted on prompt pay. And it's not prompt pay just for, we gonna make these contractors do prompt pay and then we as a county, we not doing prompt pay. So that's a larger conversation besides just JFS. But small businesses, they just can't afford, you know, like that business almost, they had to go out to get a loan and everything else. It got to find out, you said, oh, they did everything right and they wasn't getting paid. So I just, maybe like you said, it's a larger thing, but we voted on something that said prompt.
Yeah, so the prompt pay, I think under the, under the Crouson disparity study was prompt pay. And, and you hit nail, the nail on the head. I believe it was related to, um, our, uh, prime contractors to subcontractors. Um, so, but as it relates to the county as a whole, that's another question, but we can definitely take a look at that and start gathering some information on how the entire process is working soup to nuts from invoice to, to bill pay, which, which JFS and any department in the county is a part of that, but there are other departments as well that control that. Uh, but we can, um, we can take a look at that.
Okay, yeah, not just put it on you, but I, I would like to take a look at that. Um, you sit on here at call wait times, accountability, do you have, what is the average call, call time, wait time? Is that something you're going to implement?
Well, no, the average call wait time to our 9461000, if they select the courtesy callback option is 25 minutes, it's higher than what we want. Uh, but again, that is the average wait time if you call our 9461000.
Commissioner, if I could, Michael, I, I heard you say that very, uh, very clearly, but for folks who are at home.
Yeah, sure.
I want to make sure that's very clear.
Yeah.
Um, you're talking about 25 minutes for the courtesy callback.
Correct, and I can, I can clarify that.
So that's when you, you call someone, this is my interpretation, when you, when you call a place and they say, if you would choose not to stay on hold and you wish someone to call you back, press this button and you hang up and, and then you go about your business at your house and someone calls you. And it usually takes a little bit longer. So you're saying for that option, it's 25 minutes. What is, what is the, the, do you have the average time for if someone just chooses to remain on hold?
It's a little over an hour right now. And again, that, what I mentioned earlier in the presentation about some of the work we're doing, uh, statewide, and this is, this is not just a local challenge with respect to, uh, our application, uh, processing line and call-ins. Uh, it's a, it's really an, an ongoing challenge, uh, that we're working with Ohio Department of Job and Family Services Director Association on in terms of advocating for how we can, uh, improve the technology so that we can get, uh, the, uh, get the services out in a more timely fashion. Some of it is also staffing. So I mentioned earlier that we, you know, it's a math problem. It's a number of calls we have coming in compared to the number of people we have on the backend answering those. And so we, we've done some work to address that. We added nine staff to our call center line earlier this year. We starting to see some improvements there. Uh, and I expect those to continue. They're just now coming out of training. So I expect those numbers, uh, to go down a great deal as well. Uh, some of it has to do with the fact that we were on the front end, had, had long messages that, that people didn't want to, uh, stay online in here. So we refined the message, we changed the voice on the message, we cut a lot of the messaging out so people can get through quicker, uh, and, and, and be more likely to hold. So we're making these refinements that we can make locally that will, that are within our control and working with other metropolitan counties and other smaller counties to look at the overall phone system. That is a state-run system out of Columbus. So people call, the, the call routes to Columbus, it comes back to the county. Uh, and so we handle it at a county level. And so there's some systemic things that we're looking at to see how we can also continue to make improvements there. But if somebody calls, they choose a callback option, uh, it's, it's 25 minute hold time there. In our child support area, uh, that number, that call number is a little less than three minutes. And so, uh, we can, we always work and improve that, but, uh, if they choose not to do the courtesy callback, they're looking at a little over an hour in terms of the wait time there.
Okay. And then you said the average speed of an answer, what is that?
That's, that's pretty much the hold time. So I'd, I'd use those interchangeably. So what that, what that measures is how long it takes for us to answer a call. What's the maximum amount of time a person is in the queue before we answer, uh, answer the call? And so that, that's what the average speed of answer reflects.
Well, let me ask you this, on the child support, we three minutes. If somebody owes some child support, we trying to get some child support. If you're trying to get any other help, it's 25 minutes if you want to call. But that, that's just weird. How, isn't, isn't, isn't the state doing the child support system as well?
Not all counties are combined like we are, but the other, the other component there is that, uh, with, that's a separate call center. So our child support call center is separate, staff separate, uh, has, has, uh, different demands in terms of people who call and why they call. Uh, and then the other half is a public assistance, uh, 9461000 line is a public assistance line. So you have people that are calling, that are wanting to apply for public assistance, wanting to provide, uh, have questions answered related to the status of their case. And so it's a slightly different dynamic in terms of the length of the call, how long people are on the phone when we talk and help them through a process and just the sheer volume of calls that we get for that particular job classification and the people who work in that division of the agency. Child support is a separate division, separate classification, separate positions and a separate call center.
Okay. And then these are improvements or this is just what we've been doing?
These are improvements in terms of call center wait times.
That's why I want to make sure people watching.
That is correct.
These are, what you're putting forward, these are improvements.
That is correct.
On what we've had in the past.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Vice President Dreyhouse.
Thanks, thanks for the presentation, Michael. Um, I too was going to ask about the wait time. It, it hours so long. And this is the, the, if I get complaints about JFS, a lot of them revolve around having to stay on the line for so long. Some people just don't have the ability to do that. So they hang up, they got to call back, they're now on the line again. So, um, I'd be interested in a status report, given the fact that you've hired a significant number of people, um, and that you haven't seen the impact of that yet, because they've been through training. So, um, if you could let us know, you don't have to come and present necessarily, but provide an email, um, after a few months' time to see if we have reduced that, uh, wait time. I think that would be helpful, uh, because that's just a long time to wait.
Happy to do that and I agree.
And people are stressed out if they're calling JFS, they're usually stressed out about something. Um, so the other thing that you mentioned was the Office of Family Voice. And this one's been a long time coming. I remember Portune and I talking about this a long time ago. Um, so what is the status of that? Is it up and running? I mean, are, are people that are in the system able to, um, get peer-to-peer support? Or, or tell us, how fleshed out is it?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, we have a person that's been hired. I think Robert has hired in the, uh, the lead, uh, project manager that will help, uh, stand the program up. And so we're working with her, uh, to, uh, flesh out the specifics of how that process will work. I think the next phase is to sort of develop what the policies and procedures are going to look like. And then we will move to the phase of looking at, uh, individuals in the community with lived experience who would fill those roles and the, how many we want to hire, what the, you know, what the expanse, what the, um, what their role specifically will be, where, where their authority lies, funding, a lot of those specifics still have to be worked out. But I do know that we've hired, uh, someone, uh, in that role recently.
And are they?
In the Office of Economic Inclusion.
Are they, um, interacting with people?
Oh, yeah. Well, well, no, not yet. We're, the program is still under, my understanding is the program is still under development. So we have to get through the spot, the process of identifying exactly what that program is going to look like, uh, define some terms related to that. Uh, and then we will move into the, uh, phase of identifying employees that would actually do the work.
Okay. Waiting on that one, Michael. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much for the presentation and thank you so much for what JFS is doing. I, I don't know, you've been a director for about two years now?
Two and a half.
Okay, two and a half. And I think it would be great if you could list all the new programs and initiatives that, uh, you have started with your staff so people can see. Just the progression of JFS, you know? I've talked to people, seen people as it relates to job and family services and also looked at it in a clinical way as a social worker. I'm just so impressed of the new things, the new initiatives and what you guys are doing with the families and the children. And I think about, and then, um, I'll do a little prerequisite of this. This, um, organization is huge. JFS is huge. And I was writing notes, I can't read it now, but I mean, the number of vendors that you have, the number of children that you serve, the number of families that you serve, the, uh, the money that's spent on services, the checks that go out. One day you came here and told us this, the one month, how many checks that went out, the SNAP benefits, all of that. And people don't care if they miss their check. I mean, they don't care how many there are. But I think it's important that you let us and, and also, um, the community know that this is a big organization with a lot of pieces to it. And so when you miss, um, uh, miss one vendor that didn't get a check, it doesn't matter. They don't care if you have 6,000 vendors, we didn't get our check. And I understand that. But I think people need to know the relevancy of how big this organization is and how you're handling it and the improvements that you're trying to make, uh, just to, to make things better. And I've just seen just great work out of your staff. And so I just want to thank you for all of that. I, I was looking at the logo here and maybe you've had it before. I don't know if I would call it the logo, but, um, supporting families and changing lives, is that new or?
That's our mission.
That's been there.
It's been there.
Okay.
Wow, correct.
Very good. I thought the presentation was just, just awesome. We're going where we need to go. And I wrote a note, um, cultural competency, competency has to be a part of this. And what I'm, for me, um, just having a black man as a director, uh, the majority of our children are African-Americans. I don't know the percentage, but just that you understand the cultural competence that staff should have and your ability to relate to that high level of, uh, clients that we're serving, clients and families, I think has been significant in the, um, improvement of job and family services. So I'm really proud of the way that you guys are going. Of course we have quirks, we have, uh, people waiting too long on the phone sometimes, but, um, just the, the forward progression of job and family services has been outstanding. And I'm going to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a question about the phones again, because as we, we, I really believe all three of us had to hire, this is the one that we hired, this position. And all three of us are very confident in hiring you and all of us had different things we wanted to see. One of mine was customer service. I wanted to change, it's a big organization, as was indicated, but I wanted to get away from the stigma of the welfare office into now the customer service. And I've been on that since, you know, day one, that was my number one issue. And I've been on that since, you know, day one. That was my number one issue. Not that, oh, you called jobs of family services back in the day, we're doing you a favor. You know, we're, you know, it was kind of a look down on the citizens. But a lot of people, COVID helped us because people have been paying taxes and finally needed some help. And those folks were saying, hold on, I've been working a corporate job and I just lost it, or I've been doing this, and I know how service is supposed to be. And so that kind of also changed the trajectory of, you know, understanding of how we want to run it. Now, we're in a place of technology and one hour on the phone, who has one hour to be on the phone? I ain't got an hour to be on the phone. Nobody has an hour to sit on a phone. So I'm glad you're putting that forward, but now I'm saying let's move how we can try to fix it. This family first group that started back with Todd Fortune as Vice President Dreyhouse, I got people coming to me about, I can't deal with cases, but that's what family first, so they need to get up and running so that we can connect. And I know you're doing that by now, have hired somebody that could do that. But I'm saying this also, Mr. Ludo, we got to expedite because we've been, I mean, Todd Fortune, that's a long time and we don't have it. And, and families are having some situations. I don't, I'm not versed to deal with it. Legally, I can't deal with, but I need to be able to give them to some people that deal with that type of issue because we are talking about people's families and babies. And so I just want to make sure that's a good place we could, at least I, I can, my office could send them to that person once you're up and going with it. The other thing that I had was on these phones, callback, I don't know if Mr. Ludo, that got fixed. It wasn't your fault, but I just wanted to get it fixed. When we were calling back people, we saw that with the different rental assistance, et cetera. The callback said fraud on a lot of the cell phones, and I think we were trying to work.
Oh, correct, yeah.
So people weren't picking up because when you see the thing on your cell phone, it's like fraud, decline. So we were trying to make sure now that our number is not associated with the word fraud. So I don't know if that got corrected because a lot of people were not picking up the phones when, when your staff was calling them back.
I believe that that has been, at least it's been brought up to ODGFS and the state and the, and the system that they, that we operate, that they provide to us. So they've worked on that. I can get back to you on exactly whether or not that's been resolved. But that, that, again, our phone system is, is something that we use. It's a state system that we use and leverage. And so those kinds of solutions are something that the state would fix on behalf of the counties. But I'll check on that to see if that's.
I want to find out about it because people ain't picking up the phone because it say fraud. Maybe we should have some secret shoppers. I know I do it with my office. That act like they calling y'all for something and then take their cell phone and see is it still saying fraud? And then we can try to, like you said, deal with it. And all of us would be supportive to the state too to make sure. And then if that don't work, I'm glad we got the text messaging. That is how everybody communicates now. They're not doing emails. You got to text them to tell them you done emailed them. So I'm glad to see the text message. It might help if, and then have our staff know, if you call and they don't pick up, send a text so they know it was us because they may have gotten something that said fraud. So it's those kind of things to me that makes, we always want to get better. I want us to be number one in customer service because these are tax dollars. These ain't our dollars. These are tax dollars and everybody should be treated with respect, dignity, and urgency. It's like us, anybody in here, they don't get their check, they ain't saying, oh, well, everybody else got. They come, where is my check? It was not deposited. Every, I mean, I can't name one person who's on payroll who ain't going to get mad because their check didn't come in on time. So I'm glad that you're working out those things. And then what I would like to see on the plan is maybe come back with a measurement. You know, it was 25 minutes and now we down to 10 minutes. It was, you know, 120 days to get paid, we down now to 90 days. It was, that's to me, I feel like everything you do must be measured, ROI. Now we got text messaging and we getting better responses. You know, those kind of things that, this is your plan, but coming back saying, here's how the plan was successful.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. We measure, everything that I talked about today is being measured. So we can certainly give you an update on, on the progress being made in those areas for wait times and also for bill pay, any, any other interaction we have, we get, we have access and we do measure that. So certainly happy to do that.
Awesome. So that's, that helps. I know it's helpful for me. So if I run into somebody, I can say, uh-uh, no, 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 not with us. Our wait time is this. Uh-uh, no, no, no. Not with us. We doing that. And, and the information you've given me in the past has helped me be able to articulate that to constituents that may call us or I run into.
Sure, happy to, happy to provide you with whatever you guys need on that front.
I think we on a great start with this.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Hold on for a second. One second.
You, you want permission to talk? You want to say something else?
Yeah, I just didn't want him to leave before he gave me permission.
Permission to do this, go right ahead.
So, and it wasn't, we waited to you, but as far as the Family Voice person.
Office of Family Voice, correct.
She is here. She's, her office is in the back where we're located. You're saying that you're not ready to completely, or Robert is not ready to completely establish that office. But I will say that she's been very active, meeting families out in the community with the 513 relief bus, with volunteering for different activities that the county has had. So I want to just, she's getting out there knowing, not knowing, but meeting those families and out in the community. So I at least wanted to say that. So whenever you decide, and Robert decides, and Jeff, when is the best time to actually get that office going, or she'll be ready.
I know we're working with her, and I believe they're meeting on a very frequent basis with our Children's Services Section Chiefs and a supervisor to, to outline what, what that, what that plan is going to look like. So we're, that, that, that work is moving forward and having that person in that role, I think is going to help really get us to a point where we can get, get it stood up.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludo, you wanted to add?
Commissioners, yeah, just, just to tag on to that, just thank you for that, Commissioner. I, one of the notes I made during the presentation was to have Robert and Latalia follow up with a report to the board just, just on the timing related to the Office of Family Voice. And because it is a complex office and program to, to set up and establish. We've been doing a lot of work looking at other models throughout the country to make sure we're doing this in accordance with best practice. Latalia's been working on it nonstop since she's been here. So happy to, happy to follow up with the board with a formal report on where that is, what the timeline is, when we'll be rolling it out, et cetera.
You don't have a timeline? We ready to go now.
I know that.
Like she's ready to go, we're ready to go.
We're, we're looking to start hiring folks for this very, very soon, the mentors that are going to be associated with this. But I, I want to talk with Robert and Latalia first to make sure that if I'm giving a timeline publicly, that I'm on board with what they're thinking, so.
I just want to add one other, one other thing to that too, relates to the mandates and what we're mandated to do as a JFS, Children's Services, Child Protection Agency, and the role of someone in the community and how we engage with them. We just want to be really clear about what that looks like and what, what those roles and responsibilities look like to help navigate through our system. And so as we develop this, you know, it'll be really important for everybody involved to sort of understand really specifically how accessing that particular department, the Office of Family Voice and the advocacy that they are, are going to provide, what, what the extent of that is, what that looks like, and how that support could be provided to the families that are involved in our system. So that, those are the specific details that we are working on, are working through.
When you're ready, we'll have you back or them back and then roll it out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, there's no further business to come before us? Oh, it is. Oh, wait a minute, I'm ready to get about it. Oh goodness, okay, yes. I'm sorry, yes.
I'm not taking it personally.
No, I didn't turn the page. I'm up here thinking, we're done.
But I'll, I'll make this as painless and as quick as possible for you all. So I'm Maria Collins. I am the Community Development Administrator in the Planning and Development Department. And I am here today to present the recommendations for the HomeARP Nonprofit Operating Funding. So I'd just like to start off with just an overview about the HomeARP Program. In 2021, Hamilton County received $5.4 million in HomeARP funds from HUD. The county's allocation plan authorized that $273,000 of that $5.4 million would be used for general operating costs of nonprofit organizations. Organizations must serve one or more of the HomeARP qualifying populations. There are four qualifying populations that are served through these funds. The awarded organizations must reasonably be, be believed to be awarded funding for another HomeARP eligible activity within two years of award. However, this does not guarantee funding, but the organization must apply and best efforts will be made to fund that organization. These funds are for general operating costs for the nonprofit organizations. And any costs that are for program-specific activities is not eligible. So Community Development issued a NOFA, or a Notice of Funding Availability for these funds on March 5th of 2024. Applications were accepted up until April 10th of 2024. The minimal request amount was $20,000 and the maximum request was $50,000. The Community Development staff reviewed the applications for eligibility and completeness as they were received. And then the HomeARP Subcommittee of the Community Development Advisory Committee, also known as CDAC, reviewed the applications and made recommendations for organizations to be awarded to the full CDAC Committee. The eligible applications were evaluated and recommendations were made based on the evaluation criteria posted with the NOFA, direct service impacts to the HomeARP qualifying populations, and date the applications were received by Community Development. The evaluation criteria that were used were experience with qualifying programs or projects, plans for future HomeARP funding application, feasibility of future award, and the organization's needs. In this NOFA, we received 16 applications. 10 of those applications were deemed eligible. Six applicants were recommended for awards by CDAC. Four applicants received the full, recommended full request. And two applicants were recommended for a reduced award. This is a list of the 16 applications or organizations that submitted applications for this NOFA. The total funding requested was 700, over $715,000. And then of those six, I'm sorry, of those 16 applications that were received, as I mentioned previously, six were not eligible. And the reason why is that either the applicant requested funds for a program-specific cost, the funds are to be used for general operating cost, or the majority of the service area or people being served were located within the city of Cincinnati's jurisdiction. The applications or applicants that are being recommended for funding by CDAC are Legal Aid Society, they requested $50,000. They are, CDAC recommended $50,000. The board approved this request or recommendation last, at their meeting last week. Bethany House Services requested $50,000. $50,000 was recommended for funding by CDAC. The YWCA of Greater Cincinnati requested $49,869.70. CDAC recommended $49,869.70. Neighborhood Allies requested 50,000. The recommended request or amount was 50,000. Found House requested 38,000. CDAC recommended 35,900. The reason for the reduced recommendation is that the applicant included an ineligible expense in their request. Catholic Charities of Southwest Ohio requested 50,000. $37,230.30 was the recommended amount by CDAC. The reason for the reduced, recommended amount is because Catholic Charities was the last application to come, to be eligible for funding. And so CDAC recommended that they receive the remaining balance of funds, which was the $37,230. And I would also like to make a note that this award or these recommendations of 273,000 will exhaust this pool of funding for this one-time, one-time program. Okay, and then the next steps would be that Community Development will prepare the sub-recipient agreements. And then those agreements would then be placed on the consent agenda. That is the end of my presentation. I'm open for questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up. Vice President Dreyhouse.
Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you for the presentation. As I look at the applications, specifically Cincy Smiles Foundation was eligible, asked for 42,000. They're not on here. And just wondering, before I ask why, Legal Aid Society, which is on here, and also, I'll just say in general, some of the ones that you have, you guys have approved, we've given monies to in other areas by, with other funding streams. And I'm just wondering, do we look at that at all? Because I, I'm looking at three of them that we've given monies to and, but other financial resources. And I'm just wondering specifically about Cincy Smiles. It, and I have no connection with it, but I know what their mission is and what they do for those who cannot afford dental work and dental affects your brain and everything. But I'm just wondering how was, I know you couldn't give it to, to everyone, but they were eligible and they asked for 42,000. And I'm just wondering, and I guess I'm asking my colleagues also, you know, legal aid, we need legal aid, but we just gave a lot of money to legal aid. I, I don't want to pick out the ones who we just gave money to. But I'm just wondering, as we look at the criteria for giving money, we also, not that you guys didn't, need to look at the societal impact of not giving money to like Cincy Smiles. And I'm just, and I know we were out of money, but could we give less money to a couple of them that we've already given money to? And maybe, and I don't know why I picked out Cincy Smiles. I think I picked it out because I know the impact, and I've said that just a minute ago. If we could reduce any of the recommended amount, and I guess you could say that about any of them that were not approved. But I think this one has just a major impact on the community and the clientele. Poverty level of people who go there and, and how they can't go anywhere else. And so I'm just preaching to the choir maybe, but just wondering, the ones below, let's see. Have anything else to say about the ones we didn't approve, but that one just seems so critical to.
Yes, yes. And, and all of the agencies that apply for our funds, they all provide very important services. However, this, these funds were presented through a Notice of Funding Opportunity. So basically, the way that they were taken in, it was based on the date received. So it was kind of like a first come, first served situation. So these agencies are listed within the order in which we received applications for funding. Because it is very competitive and all of these services are very important, we did the best, or at least I should say that CDAC did the best that they could with trying to expend the limited funds that we have in a very competitive way and fair way. And the way, one of the ways that we did that was basically based on the date that the applications were received for funding. So as you could see, Cincy, I'm sorry, Cincy Smiles was actually, their application came in right after Catholic Charities. So if, you know, there was more funds, we definitely, Cincy Smiles would have possibly received some type of funding. So that's just where we.
I see four of them that were eligible but didn't get money. The rest of them were not eligible. So.
So we funded it.
Eligible, we have been, we have given money to them before, like Boys and Girls Club.
Yes.
I don't know, I've always been advocate for if we can maybe give less to somebody so somebody else can get something. And I'm, you know, I'm not trying. And I'm, you know, I'm not trying to, I'm glad that we're able to disperse and I know there was a lot of discussion. So there are actually four that were not approved because we didn't have the money for it. But there are also someone here that we did approve that we've given money to recently. And I don't know if it's first come, first served, you were saying, if they meet the deadline. There's a deadline that.
Yes, in April the 10th, I believe was the deadline.
They met the deadline. I don't know why it would matter if, if they did it by April the 10th and somebody did it on the 1st, why they should not have as much consideration.
Well, they were all considered. They were all considered, but they were considered. Part of that consideration was based on the date that we received their application.
So you get a certain point for that.
Yes. But if. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, what do you get for meeting the deadline and what do you get for doing it early? You get a higher point or something?
Well, I mean, it's just that you are listed higher on the, the list.
On the list.
Yes, on the list. And then from there, the applicant, applications are, are reviewed based on other criteria that I listed previously.
And you were saying this will end our fun, our money that we have, right?
For, for this particular, our allocation for the nonprofit operating services. We still have other activities that we're funding with our HomeARP Fund.
Okay.
So affordable rental housing, the nonprofit operating services, which is the recommendations today. We have supportive services as well that acts very similar to our Community Development Block Grant Nonprofit Investment Partnership Program.
Okay.
And then of course, and then we have non-congregant shelter. So our funds are, this particular activity that we had identified for, in our implementation plan, those funds are expended so for this, but the other programs or activities which we will still be administering funds have not been exhausted yet. We have not awarded funds or for those particular activities at this particular point.
And I thank you for that because I was just sitting here thinking, it was going through my head. One of my colleagues could say, well, what about Boys and Girls Club, which we love?
Yeah.
And they didn't get funded. So you can always pick one out that you think should, but I respect the process.
Okay. And I, and I would like to also add, Commissioner Dooley, is that I will be coming before you again in a few weeks with the recommendations for the nonprofit services grants. So the same agencies that applied for the nonprofit operating HomeARP Funds have also applied for the nonprofit services grants or other programs. So.
Thank you.
We'll be coming back again once those recommendations have been made. CDAC is actually in the process of finalizing their review and recommendations for those funds.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I think would it be helpful to, because we have so many different pots, if there would be another line item to say, did we do anything with any of our other grants? So we could see, it could be, you know, did they, not to say they don't need additional money, but at least it gives us to understand, did we do something for these different groups or did we just leave them hanging? I'll be honest with you. I'm for Cissy Smiles to be on the 513 relief bus. We were trying to get the dental and I, and they want to do it and I don't know why they, we denied them the funding. Not we as a board, but we denied them the funding. So what they told me is that they would be, you know, they don't have, they used to have a little yellow bus and you know, it's not operating anymore. They would love to be on the brand new bus that we have and already got the dental chairs and so forth. And we've got money and we're saying, oh, we gotta reallocate this money by certain. I want to, why not have Cissy Smiles on the bus? We have funding. We may not have it in this pot, but we've got some other pots. So I'm willing to, you know, work with my colleagues to see how we might be able to, you know, have that and still accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, but do it in another way with another pot. But I would like to see also, it's gonna sound silly, but it's true. Because I want to see some eye services for people who can't afford it. Now, I don't know if that's what the Eye Institute's foundation is, was offering, but I'd like to know like, what, what are they offering? Is their foundation, because when you hear Eye Institute, you think, oh, we're gonna do luxury eye surgery. But they have a foundation. So I'd like to see what they presented and what they're trying to do. And, and like I said, it may not fit here, it might fit, like you said, when you come back or it might fit another place. But, you know, we're looking at how do we stretch these dollars, these different pots we got and provide those direct services to, to folks? Because the bus would be going countywide, which would allow them not to say, oh, they're only in the city of Cincinnati. It would show that, you know, they are countywide and are meeting that, that criteria that you have. So yeah, I mean, we've got some great organizations doing great things. I know we've got limited funds, but maybe we could be creative and, and, and I think that extra column will help us to say, well, we, we have helped them, you know, I wouldn't want to leave the girl, the Boys and Girls Club high and dry and I don't think we have. I think we've done something with them. So that would also help us tell, I know it helped me get a better picture.
So can I make a suggestion too?
Vice President Treehouse.
We, in the last presentation, we had more detail about, we had all the detail about why something was approved and why it was not approved. And I think that kind of detail would be helpful to us. Because it, again, it's same situation. It's clear that the ones that aren't eligible are not getting funding. Understood, got it. But decisions are being made about some of these other organizations that were eligible but didn't get funded or got partially funded. And just the detail of the rationale behind that, I think, would be hugely helpful for us before we get to the meeting. So we have a better understanding.
Will do.
Of all of that.
Duly noted.
And then legal, and just to be clear, the legal aid, we already approved that. So what the recollection is, we just approved it. That, that is what this is. So this isn't a double, right? We are, this is what we already did and that is the only one.
That's the only one.
Right, that we already did. The rest of them are yet to be approved by us. I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, yeah. Just coming out of the same pool of funds.
True.
Right.
Well, thank you so much. You have to go through all of this. We appreciate it. And I think all of those recommendations, suggestions, I like, you know, y'all know you'll take it back and implement those suggestions. We appreciate it.
When I bring the nonprofit services recommendations, I'll have a list of the agencies that received this recommendation for funding for this HomeARP Funds, just so you can see, you know, who got, who was funded and who was not. So. But I will say that your, your suggestions are duly noted and I will make sure to pass that along to the advisory committee.
What, what might also be helpful is for us to understand the criteria. I mean, we're talking about criteria and we don't have the criteria in front of us because you're, you're evaluating by a point system. So it might, to your point, you know, first come, first served, why, what's the rationale behind that? So it might be helpful for us to see the criteria too, to get a better understanding of what, what people are thinking when they do the evaluation.
Yeah.
She did this before and then I think, I mean, I don't know how many times you came before us, but you, didn't you have something with criteria and all of that?
So the, this particular program was a little bit different.
Okay, then the other ones.
And how, and how it was scored. I mean, it wasn't really like as, as clean as with the other programs where we actually give a, like a score to each of the criteria. It was more so to, let me find this here. Let's see. It was more, what, what was being looked at was whether or not the agency was experienced with working with or administering qualifying programs or projects. If they had plans to apply for future HomeARP funding. So not for this particular pool, but for like the affordable rental housing or the supportive services, because they can come back and apply for those funds as well. And how feasible is it that they will be awarded in the future for supportive services or affordable rental housing or non-congregant shelter, non-congregant shelter project? And also how great is their need, the organization need for the funds, for capacity and so on and so forth?
Yeah, I just think the Board probably said, because this is different than the one where you ran.
Right.
So maybe there's one slide to say, here's what they were looking at.
Okay.
And that might answer the question.
I will definitely, we'll flesh it out a little bit more.
There's one, there's one.
There's one.
Because you don't, you don't want to mess Maria Chink over here with a book and say, hey, how much information you want? Because I know you gotta, you have a stack that you gotta go through.
I aim to please.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. And you said something will be coming before us?
Yeah, in a few more weeks, I'll be coming with the nonprofit. God, it, services thing, they start to run together after a while. But the nonprofit services recommendations for our 2024 funding.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Treehouse?
Oh, yes. I thought you said Ms. Commissioner Summer Dooley.
Yes.